I'd like to call the Monday, September 22 regular board meeting to order. Call the roll please.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mrs. Washington.
Present.
Dr. Ballard.
Here.
Mrs. Nazario.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
We do.
Do.
Please?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Rodriguez and Mr. Shaw from Admiral King Elementary School tonight. They're going to lead us in the pledge and also have their students talk to us about who their hero is and why.
Very cool. The adje. The adje.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today we have with us some of our grade five students who on September 11th did some reflections in class on September 11th and talked about who their heroes are. First of all, what is a hero? And who their hero is? And they each did a few sentences on who their hero is. And I thought that would be perfect to share with you tonight. So first up, can I have Mr. Robert come on up?
Amy, you can take the microphone out too.
A hero to me is someone that helps me when I need it. To me, a hero is my mom. She helps me care for me and helps me when I need it. Thank you, Mom, for giving me life.
Robert, that was outstanding.
Awesome job, Robert. Thank you. Next, can I have Ms. Summer Salenko come on up?
This is what's going to make them hear you by talking into here, okay?
To me, a hero is a person who saves me from everything. My heroes are friends, Mom, Dad, because they always save me from anything.
Beautiful, Summer. Thank you.
Awesome job, Summer. Thank you. Next up, can I have Ms. Ava Torres?
Talk in here. This just will make them hear you, okay?
To me, a hero is helpful. My hero is Jesus because he is here for me and blesses everyone that needs it.
Comes down to.
All right, next we have Isaac Strouderman.
To me, a hero is someone who saves lives. My hero is my mom because she helps me.
Okay, Ms. Naraya Williams, come on up.
Right here?
Yes.
To me, a hero is someone who is nice and helpful. My hero is my family because my mom gave birth to me and my family cares about me.
And I think that is everyone. We had a couple more kiddos, but it seems like something happened and they're not here. So one more round of applause for our Admiral King students and their heroes.
Absolutely amazing. Appreciate the depth and the focus and the fact that it was about people who you care about and care about you back. So that's what a hero is. So if we could maybe line up up front, see if we can get some pictures? That's all right?
Everybody ready? In one, two, three. One more, and one, two, three.
One more round of applause. Whoops. And this is a part of the meeting where it gets a little bit more boring. So if everybody wants to sneak out, we fully support and understand.
And recommend.
Yeah, highly recommend. But you're welcome to stay.
At this point, any visitors in the audience?
Matt Kuzner for the city.
I see Matt Kuzner for the city. Hi, Matt. First hearing of the public.
Good job, Naraya. Great job.
Anybody with anything they might want to talk about? Nope. I will entertain a motion to amend or approve the minutes of the September 8 meeting waiving the right to read the minutes.
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Old business. Hearing seeing none. Reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
I have items 8.01 through 8.05 for approval.
So moved.
So forth.
Discussion? Once again, thank you to all our donors. First, one, two, and three, that's another $7,000 from our good friends at the IAV. I see a lot of things for individual classrooms and schools on here and that's absolutely appreciated and welcome. Thank you to our community partners and supporters. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
Reports and recommendations of the superintendent personnel.
I would like to start out by inviting up Mr. Bill Oly and Mr. D'Angelo to give us an update on where we are with attendance. And I think we've all acknowledged the fact that we are certain areas in which we need to improve and at the very top of that list is attendance. And many, many plans have been in place where finally identifying factors that have had a tremendous impact on attendance. I'd like to give you an update on where we are compared to where we've been.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Again, wanted to follow up. The presentation we started off with in August about where we were and now that the data is now public on the report card, I'll show you that we have had some gains in areas of our attendance. We have seen our attendance rate improve. We have seen our attendance rate gain steadily over the past several years. And the red line is the line I'd like to focus on in this graph. This is showing how our chronic absenteeism rate is dropping.
And these are same points in time in the past, right?
Same points in time. And this is full year data that's been provided by the state report card system.
Thank you.
So in the gap positive component related to attendance, we were just shy of meeting points related to attendance. In our chronic absenteeism percentage points reduced, we reduced as a district 0.9 points. We would have gotten the indicator in attendance if we had 1.1. Or in our chronic absenteeism percentage reduced, we reduced 1.5. If we were 3.0 or higher, we would have gotten that indicator. So we're making great strides.
We expect to get that this year, yes.
Yeah, as the district rating makes sense. We have some great performance though by individual buildings. We wanted a spot like them at this time. The buildings highlighted in green are those that showed gains in their attendance rate from last year to this year, from the reporting year of '23, '24 to the reporting year of '24, '25. There's also a drop in the chronic absenteeism rate from '23 to '24 and '24 to '25. And further, let's share our story, Mr. Oly.
I wanted to highlight a few ways that we're actively working to improve attendance across the district. First, we'll probably be a part of the Cleveland Brown State in the Game Network. It's a state campaign that connects showing up to school every day with six steps, both in school and in life. And through assemblies, incentives, community recognition, we're making daily attendance something our students can be excited about. And secondly, we launched the Tightest Attendance Challenge. Thank you, Michael Scott, for bringing that development to us. And this friendly competition recognizes the schools with their highest attendance each week and the winning school earns the tightest change. And celebrates with announcements, photos, student spotlights, and takes pride in their achievement. It's been a visible and motivating way to keep attendance from the center. And we're also shifting the way that we engage with families by making asset-based phone calls. Instead of only calling when there's a problem, our staff also reaches out to celebrate improvements and recognize that. And the calls build trust and strengthen partnerships with our families. And they help us address barriers to attendance performance on the front. Also, our school leaders meet every Tuesday at 9:30 to review attendance data like Missy just showed us and friends. And these meetings keep us focused and powerful, ensuring that we're identifying challenges and working as a team to remove those barriers. The emphasis is on finding solutions together so that families and students feel supported in coming to school every day. So these efforts reflect our commitment to building a culture where every day counts. And we're beginning to see progress. And with continued partnership among families, staff, and the community, we believe we can sustain and accelerate these behaviors. That's where we are right now.
Very good.
Any questions for the board? Again, this is something we recognize is an area of growth for us. We've been focused on it for well, since we came back from COVID. We've tried some things that were best practices and candidly, they didn't have the effect or the impact that we hoped they would. We did some things last year by trying different things and personalizing our approaches, as Bill and Messi were talking about, and trying to be much more connecting with our families. And it's had a positive impact on several of the elementary schools last year. And now we've expanded it to make it an expectation of all.
Jeff, I would ask, and it seems like we're trending up, but when we cut back our busing route, is there any correlation on us cutting back on the busing route to absenteeism for some of our kids that may be out of our 1.9 miles?
I can get that information, but I think that we cut that back a long time ago. I think it was always, it was two miles when I was here during my first tour. And our chronic absentee rate was about 20%, where last year was 59%. So even with the two miles, we were a whole lot better off in the past. But Barbie asked the same question before the board meeting and I told her that I would get you the information on the cost.
Get you. Look at you.
Yep, so we'll get that information out to you. It'll take a couple days because there's obviously a lot of things to factor in. If we change ours, Lorraine City Schools from two miles to a mile, we also have to accommodate all the charter schools and private schools the same way.
I know it's a balance.
Yeah, so it's.
But I was just curious if there was any correlation between the two.
I don't believe so based on what, at least not during my tenure.
Okay.
And we have a lot of, we call space available. When there's space available on a bus, even if you don't qualify, we still get you on the bus.
Got it.
Do we have a waiting list for that?
Yes.
I know we used to.
And right now is about the time that they're probably, I don't say finishing it up, but actually Tony's out there. Tony, can you speak to that specifically? I know the goal is to have it done by October 1st because we have so many students moving in and out that we have to make sure that the students we require to transport have access. And that number just changes daily. So we say October 1st, but our goal is to get it done much sooner. Is that right? Yep. Can you do the microphone, Tony? Do you mind for TV?
I'm Tony.
He's got the face for it.
Oh, yeah. No, no, not at all.
Yeah, we do have quite a few students that are currently waiting on space available. We do delay that process simply because we don't know how many of our students are going to be eligible riding on our buses, so we want to make sure we have space available on those buses. Not to mention, we don't want to put a student from the space available list on a bus to find out that we're going to have to move them off the bus because somebody eligible is going to take that seat. So they're very cautious on how they do it. That's what the delay is, but we're about the time where we're going to start routing a lot of those kids and giving them opportunity to transportation. I will say that hopefully with the new buses that are coming in, we picked up five of them last week, so that should help fill some of those gaps as well. But transportation department is working really hard to try to get all those students transported, and we're going to do the best we can in getting them off that list and get them on a bus.
Thank you.
You're good.
I don't know if it would be appropriate, I know Dr. Sturgill works with the, with the Tuesday meetings, and would you be able to speak to, like, what are the main concerns in general?
I'm sorry, main concerns of?
For the students that are chronically absent.
Yeah, Stephen. Stephen does take the lead for the district, yeah. Can you come on up?
While he's walking up.
Yep.
You know, there, there's a gamut of issues. I wish there was a, you know, where we could say there's a one or two trending things. You know, it is a personalized approach. I think, you know, things range from, I mean, remember, we were in COVID, we were telling folks, if you had a, then you were staying home. And we did that for a while. I think there were some habits that were grown through that. Now we need to differentiate between not feeling well and being sick, because those are two different pieces, right? You know, I know we talked a lot about transportation. In the big scheme of things, I don't, trending, I can't say that that has been, relative to busing, has been a, the root cause. That's what we got to try and solve, to be honest. So I don't want to, you know, put Dr. Sturgill to answer this alone, but, you know, how we take care of ourselves does matter. Access to medical care, that's why we have the clinic at Washington, to help provide readily accessible care for our families, which we know has been historically a barrier. But, you know, making sure that, you know, germs don't spread, widespread during the seasons, that's a big part. But let's be honest, too, we have to make sure that school is as irresistible as possible, because that does impact students' desire to want to come. And we're working on those pieces as well. You know, going back to our last year, public, very public conversations around, you know, how, you know, behavior and how we begin and end our days, that's what's, one of the huge things that came up. We're starting to see where that's, you know, really making a difference for some kids this year already. Even with our big kids, you know, doing things like the senior lounge, you know, raises some excitement. We have to continue to look for those ways and activate student voice on what's important to them. So I wish I could say, you know, there, here are the three main reasons students aren't coming to school, but there's so many personalized approaches. That's why, you know, having the meetings at the building level, where we bring parents in before it becomes punitive in nature, to find out what those root causes are, and then work like heck for those individual families to help overcome some of those barriers. And then sometimes it is a will piece, too. I mean, you know, it's, I've got a seven and eight-year-old at home, and some mornings it's hard, you know, but we have to be resolved in those habits around what we do at night, what we do in the morning, how we build positive experiences, do matter. So I think there isn't a one-size-fits-all, to make a long story short, but there are a lot of individualized things, and it's our job to help meet what those individual barriers are. And then sometimes we do have to hold the ground and say, no, this is our reasonable expectation for our families, too. Like, we have to. And what we don't realize is two days of absence a month add up over the course of eight months, right? Seven months, seven, eight months. It adds up. And historically speaking, we know that around the ninth, 10th, 11th day of absence in a year, after that 11th day of absence, that's when our scores start to, you know, student success on our standardized measures begin to go down. I was talking to a student today at Longfellow, and the student said, part of the reason why they come to school is because they don't want to miss the work because it's twice as hard to catch up. I think that was a brilliant point by that young lady. If you miss one day, it's not just missing one day, it's like missing two, because when you come back, the class is still moving forward, and you're trying to catch up, right? So what happens when I feel as though I'm behind and I can't catch up? I stop coming. And those are the barriers that we're fighting every single day. But things like we having fathers walk last week, fathers are father figures, the community effort towards getting our most precious entities up to school, our children, that's how we're going to win this thing. And it does have to be competitive. And we've got to be able to say as a community, you know what? We can do better. We are better than what our ranking has been, and let's show up and show out. To me, like, that's the, that's the grassroots effort that we need to take. So didn't answer your question completely, gave you some things to think about, hopefully. And Dr. Sturgill, what do you want to add to that? Sir.
I really have nothing else to add. I think Mike, Mike.
Mike stole the mic, yeah.
But I will, I will say this, that there is a concerted, concerted effort.
Okay, good.
There is a concerted effort from everybody in this room, and to lead the school admin on doing everything we can to get our students in school, and our model of being on time all day and every day is that consistent message. And so what you're seeing, everything that Bill did, what Missy and what we're doing is, is really, really working to break down those barriers we might have talked about. You know, we have a very aggressive wraparound services department, but also we offer a lot of services to our family, which is incredible. So I think, one, it is definitely, those relationships matter. We're doing it, and knock on wood, you're going to see a nice decrease in chronic absenteeism. If everything holds, the way we're going.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
And just, we, we do have a check, and Stephen didn't mention this, but to Stephen and Missy and others' credit, every, every single week on Tuesday morning, we know exactly where the students are. So it's a check every single week to see who's been out, where are they, why. Home visits are a part of that with follow-ups, and then to follow up the following week where they are. So much started last year, and then even more intense this year, attention to knowing where all of the students are, and if they haven't been coming, why they haven't been coming, what the result of the home visit was, to really make sure that we know where our kids are at all times.
We've thrown around the term chronic absence. Can we define that for people? How many hours or days makes you chronically absent?
Think about it in a 10%. How many days do we have in a, in school year? 180?
174.
174.
174. So 10% of that, so 17 days, which is, depending on the building.
It's a day every two weeks.
And it's all the hours, though, that.
It's about hours.
Right. It's about hours.
Yeah, it's all the hours. So if we, we come late here and there, we leave early here and there, it, it all, it all adds up.
Everything matters.
Okay.
I have a question regarding the high school. I see we do a lot to target the younger kiddos. What are we doing at the high school to help, you know, let them know school is fun and important and all of those good things?
Well, the Titus Challenge is district-wide, so there's an elementary division and a secondary division. So they're, they're also involved in that race to get the, the chain.
Yeah. The personalized approach, so Julio Rivera at the high school.
Yeah.
The assistant principal is championing the attendance. He is the, on Tuesday when we meet, he represents the high school, and the same processes. So each grade level has their students that they're responsible for, personalized phone calls come out through administrative, through the building, trying to find out where kids are. Also, we utilize our SEO to go out for those big cases, figure out. But I think the root of your question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Washington, is, you know, how are we making school cool for the big ones? Make sure that, yeah. And, and that is, you know, clearly a focus on, you know, leveraging student voice. So Dr. Graham, over the last couple of years with Miss Cheers, has had some advisory groups kind of give them some thoughts on what could make school a little bit better. You know, making sure that we have access, that all our students have access to the plethora of clubs. So at the beginning of the year, at a whole, like, this is what we offer, beginning with the freshmen, and saying, hey, here are the, here are the things that we offer, sign up, because we know when students are engaged in at least one activity after school, the likelihood of them coming to school more often increases. So they are going to continue to work on that. We are going to continue to activate more student voice and find out, you know, what they need and get their feedback, but I will give a shout out to Michael Fashati, who's behind the scenes right now. Yeah, yeah, you, right over there. I don't know if the camera will swirl to you, but, you know, making sure that, you know, we also modernize our approach towards communicating with our students is important. So Titan to Titan, podcast created by students for students, and the things that are going to come from that, you know, we're going to listen. And, and if they say, hey, these are some things that are trending that are important to us, it's our responsibility, it's our moral obligation to make sure that those things come to life. So now, is that as quick as a switch, an on switch? That takes some time, we've got to continue to build trust and, you know, things of that nature, but that is the approach, and all the practices, you know, from a systemic standpoint, are important. So identifying early in the day who's here and who's not here, making sure that our mandated law calls go out, but then also the personalized pieces. You know, to me, it matters when I get a phone call from my, it could be any staff member. If my child is out and I hear a personal phone call, like, hey, I just missed you, that matters. So we're, you know, working in that avenue. And that's rather your pre-K all the way up to that senior year. But it does start with really making sure that we're paying attention to the data, because if we don't pay attention to the data, it's very easy, especially a school as big as Lorraine High, for students to fall through the cracks, and that's the things that we can't allow.
And our seniors had the, one of the larger improvements in chronic absenteeism last year. Second grade made grade improvements. Our senior class was one of the larger, or grades with the larger improvement. Success Academy was one of our schools that had some of the best improvement in attendance. And the emphasis around connectivity and Success Academy in particular, the students asked for a more family feel to the school, which they've absolutely worked on to do, and they've had, again, some of the best improved attendance at 12th grade at Success Academy.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And we had, nope, we're not done?
Are you doing it?
Okay, no, go ahead, please.
No, no, because I want to spotlight Reggie, if I can, right now, too. Today, Mr. Shaw, today, I was walking through Ram King, and I walked in, and he was on the phone talking about, you know, calling and personalizing. He was reaching out to parents, you know, midday, still encouraging them, it's not too late to bring your child to school today. If they're feeling better, bring them in, because every minute matters. So I just want to, like, those type of midday approaches, and then kids are coming through. So that personalized approach matters.
Please.
Mr. Shaw, you have a young student here with us, right, that still has some information from Ram King that they like to share, correct?
Yeah.
Come on up.
And Jalen, I apologize, I know this room's hard to find, so thanks for being patient with us.
All right, this is one of our fantastic fifth graders. She is a leader in the building, she's a part of the leadership team, but today she's up to present her hero. So I'm going to step back, and I'm going to let you do your thing.
Okay. My hero is Martin Luther King because he let different races be able to go to the same school, and he gave, no, and he made, he made a speech for everyone to go to the same school.
Nice. Never worth the wait. Jalen, can we get our picture taken with you?
Yeah.
And also, Dad's here.
Come on up, Dad.
Dad, as our father walked, we, we were at a parade, pretty much, and he was right there with the parade. Come on up.
Three, and one, two, three. One more, and one, two, three.
Nice. Nice job.
All right, at the request of the board, I would like to pull out from the administrative section, I'm sorry, from the policy section, 9.07, Admin Contract, Volume 44, Number One, New Board Cell Phone Policy. And I would like to move that from 9.07 to make it a standalone item at 9.10. I'd like the board to consider for approval items 9.01 to 9.09 for approval.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
And I'd like the board to consider for approval, the cell phone policy just removed, 9.10.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion?
What is this policy?
It is a cell phone policy for the board, so we're aware that we shouldn't be scrolling on our cell phones either, like we're asking our students to do and our staff to do, to be more aware not to use the cell phones during board meetings. It came from, one, there's issues with the city, where city council are using their cell phones during meetings, and people are public, requesting public records for their text messages that are sent and received during the meetings, and also pictures of board members and people at the table using their phone on a pretty regular basis. And people want to know, are we paying attention to what is being said during the meeting to the people at the podium, or just here at the table? Are we, are we committed? Are we dedicated? Are we listening? So my request was at our policy committee to draw up a policy. This policy is used by one other school, with the exception of the storage of the phones that one included. You can't have your phone anywhere near you. I know that there are emergencies. I use my phone to monitor my glucose level. I know sometimes Courtney has her kiddos that are walking over from the stadium. You might need to glance over and see, is that an emergency? Do I need to pick it up right now? I think that that's understandable. For you to have your phone in your hands scrolling or texting during a meeting, I think that that's disrespectful and unacceptable, and that's why we talked about this policy in the policy committee, and it did get the support, and it moved to here.
I guess my concern with that is, first of all, as board members, I've never seen anybody making phone calls while sitting in a board meeting. I do understand sometimes when people see you on your phone, or your iPad, or your computer, they don't necessarily know what you're doing there, but I don't know if we necessarily need a policy to dictate that, because I can do everything on my iPad that the board issues us, that we can do on our phones nowadays, other than make phone calls. Just don't know, and excuse me for being short of breath, but I'm just not sure if we need a policy put into place to govern this group of leaders who should have a pretty good discernment on what they should and should not do with those kind of tools. So I appreciate the, the concern from your constituents or yourself, but, yeah, that's an, that's a bit of a, I don't want to call it anything other than, I just think that we can govern ourselves on that without a board policy change.
Was there anything from the state on this? I mean, usually, usually there's, there's things where it references law. I mean, is it, is it a law?
I'm not sure. Tony's here, I don't know if we want to bring him up. I know the other Tony is one of the, one of the gentlemen who they're requesting. I know the other Tony is one of the gentlemen who they're requesting his cell phone messages from, but I met Tony Giardini. I saw Tony over there shaking his head. If it violates a Public Meetings Act, or if it, whatever we're doing on our phone, does it, is it considered a public record if it's going on during a meeting?
Correct. So there's no law that requires a board to pass a policy like this. On the other hand, it is true that council members in various cities text one another during meetings and effectively bypass the sunshine law by making their comments to each other that no one else can see. And in my opinion, if those discussions are going on by text message, let's say, those are public records, because effectively those are comments or discussions that are being had, but not directly in the public. So whether you need a policy or not, I don't know, because they're going to be public records either way. So if somebody violates the policy or they're following a policy, doesn't matter. If you're texting about some matter, some business matter before the board that you're about to vote on, you, that certainly would be subject to discovery in a public records request, and I wouldn't advise doing it. I think it's, but on the other hand, I understand the other commentary I heard, and that is some people take notes on their cell phone, some people, you know, they do other things. Pleasing it might be a little bit difficult.
Do we get our policies usually informed from Neola?
This came from Neola.
It did?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Well, I share Dr. Ballard's concerns totally, and I think I've made, you know, my position clear on this. While I understand its intent, I agree with Dr. Ballard. Anyone else? Roll call.
Mrs. Washington?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
No.
Dr. Ballard?
No.
Mr. Sturgill?
No.
I'd like the board to consider for approval, items 10.01 to 10.13 Operations Matters.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion.
Yes. I have a discussion on 10.04. Did anybody read the contract on this one? Or...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I don't support this one. So I guess I have to retract my support on 10.04.
Your second is just to...
Yeah, just to put it up.
Oh, just put it up. Okay, I'm sorry.
Just to be able to discuss.
Okay.
What's the concerns with the...
Did you read the contract on this one?
A while, I mean, several days ago, not.
Do you have any concern?
I don't, I didn't recall seeing any. And I guess I was kind of excited, because I've heard Rick Womelley speak many times.
Did you see the number of people that this amount of money covers? Do you recall that at all?
I don't, I do not, but I know that professional development money is, is use it or lose it kind of deal.
Correct.
And as I understand it, if we don't use it the next couple of, next week, is that right? We lose about...
This, this, this money was supposed to be used, I believe, right, as of June?
This part, I'm sorry, what are the dates on this?
October 8th and November 11th.
So this is for the duration of the school year? Correct.
This part is for fiscal year 26.
But it is rollover money, if that's what you're asking.
Got you.
If I'm not confused.
Correct.
Technically two separate parts. It's rollover that's...
That's the board that has to be used. Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
There's a portion that needs to be used by the end of this month, and there's a portion that has to be used by the end of fiscal year 26.
So do you know the remaining of the money? How much?
Not offhand.
I just, I personally think, I'm sad that we have money that needs to be used and we don't have other things on here, help addressing other needs. I think that's a lot of money for, at the max, for, is it 400 people?
Up to 100.
100 per class. I think it was like four or something classes. That's my concern on here.
And from what I know of Rick Womelley, he's a middle school specialist. I don't know if he's, who he's addressing, but...
He's, no, he does, he does K through 12. He is one of the foremost experts in the country in standards-based grading, and...
That's the problem that I think that I have is, I worry about adding something else new, when I feel like we're still, we've tried a lot of, we're working on another, a lot of new things this year that we're trying to make work, that we add something else on to. I wish we could have got some professional development. I'm in complete support of professional development. I wish we could have got some professional development on the things that we're already doing new in our schools. Some more. I mean, I heard there was great professional development on soft opening and closings. If we could have got some more of those for teachers, maybe. Something more on, we know trauma-based, trauma for our kids. If we could have got professional development for that for our schools. I just don't think standard-based grading is something right now that we need to be focusing on, when we have other things that I wish we could have spent that $50,000 on, that type of thing. Found that type of...
I'm going to agree with you. If this is going to turn into a movement this year to standards-based grading, I would not support that movement. However, this gentleman is such an amazing educator.
I don't know if there's a, there's not an issue with the gentleman. I think there was an issue with this amount, with the amount of money that we were paying per group. So that's why I was asking about the contract, if anybody read the contract and knows what it covers. I'm not talking about the gentleman. I don't have, I don't know who he is.
Yeah, I think if we could talk, just take a step back, and maybe we can kind of tie all these things here together. So the, yeah, so the...
Which we want to be in our agenda and our contracts.
The Educational Service Center did a contract with him for Lorain County districts last year, and we had a team that participated in that, in that learning series. And the, I mean, the feedback was fantastic. I mean, just really excellent. And our district leadership team met a couple of weeks ago, and one of the areas that we identified as a need is that we don't have consistency in what a grade means across our, across all of our schools. We have connected to our strategic plan laid out, scope and sequence revision, resource adoption. We've taken those steps. We've been working on making sure that we have equal opportunities across all of our schools, and the next step on that, then, is to connect grading practices. So this is part of a, part of our strategic plan. And to get to that, that next, that next point, we, I completely agree about that this connects into environment and culture and how we feel about, about school. One of the things that, that we know is that when students start to fall behind, there is a lack of hope. And if we don't have, quite honestly, a really good, clear approach to how we measure student success, how we measure growth, and how we provide feedback, we can sometimes contribute with, without, I mean, it's not like there's bad intent here, but we can contribute to a lack of hope for students in many cases and lack of clarity. So this isn't just about what we, like, how we actually put grades together. It's about our expectations all along the way. It's about how we, how we hold high expectations for kids. It's about how we provide meaningful feedback in the moment and how students can show in multiple ways what they know and are able to do. It's about the, really going deeper with our collaborative practices that our teachers have and being on the same page with what they expect and how the best ways are to design that instruction in the end for our students. So it's a whole, like, it ties a lot of work that we've been doing together, and this is not for us to have a new report card this year. This is us learning and growing and developing so we can start to scale up, and this team will decide what our, like, when we, you know, flip the switch, so to speak, or when we scale up. Realistically, nothing before the start of the next school year. So I know we've had a couple of different runs in the past at standards-based grading, and one of the main themes is that it was too quick, or it was just thrust upon us, or this didn't have any teacher voice. And our approach is no different than, than other. We'll have a team that works on this. We have an eager group from our district leadership team already who's said that they would like to work on this. We will listen, we will learn, we will lead, you know, based on that, and the timeline will be determined based on the group of people that are doing the leadership around that work. In terms of expenses, I believe, if I remember correctly, $7,000 per day, which in terms of professional development is frankly a very reasonable price. It's not outrageously expensive at all. He suggested that we start with two days with our district leadership team, which I think is absolutely appropriate, be very, very similar to the two days that our team, initial team that went last year and participated had. He was very positive about the two days that they had with him. And then, from there, based on those two days, our district leadership team is going to decide what, what does the work need to look like for our early elementary, for our later elementary, for our middle school, for our departments, for our high school, for our departments within the high school, and with our families. So we're, you know, making sure our families are a part of the discussion as well. And, and then the way that the contract is written is to give us that flexibility. So we've got the two days on the front end, and then he had suggested a follow-up a couple of days in November, but that he's very flexible and will adjust around, you know, our needs and what our team comes up with. So the contract is written for, I think it's $50,000, and that's for several days. Should we need them or not? It's not a, it's not a guaranteed $50,000.
And please keep in mind that the Title II A funds are restrictive funds, meaning they're for limited use, and we are not guaranteed to have any rollover funds the following year. So they have to be used strategically.
Yep.
Used for teacher professional development.
Yep.
And the two points I want to emphasize when Ross gave his, again, great explanation, is the fact that this is and has been part of our strategic plan, and the goal is not just to provide a report card, it's to improve instruction.
Yeah, I'm not against standard-based grading. I mean, right now, I would be...
That's what I'm saying, right now. I just, like I said, I just wish we had, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wish we had some more, like, approving professional development for trauma. We hear so often that that's what our kids, we know that. We know. I mean, I know my kids are in school with kids that they come home and these kids are just, we know that. If we could get our teachers some more of that, because Panorama's not giving them everything that they need. And so I would just wish we would have seen a $50,000, to approve a $50,000 payment to a professional development for something like that before the standard...
And we have looked at that, by the way. We're still in the process. Bruce Perry was almost our day one person, who was the person, but he was $50,000 for the day. So that was still a cost prohibitive. But trauma-informed instruction and trauma-informed care is, is still a focal point.
Yep.
And we did, you know, from the voice of what came out of last year's conversation, we did offer summer, we did begin our year with trauma-informed professional development series across. I think part of professional development now is to go from awareness into the implementation of the year to having dialogue on our professional development days, still around the same topic, is professional learning on that. So we're not straying away from continuing to have the conversation on that.
I'm not saying that. I just said I wish that I saw things of $50,000. Like I said, we're spending it on that right now.
And we have 115, believe it was, new hires that haven't received our training. Going back real quick to the standards-based grading, I was here when we did it a long time ago, and we had report cards that were this big.
Yeah, that's not the...
And I believe we were moving, you know, in the right direction then. We had the grade for parents to understand the normal kind of grading we were used to, along with some standards underneath. So I do understand that it's important. That's not why I voted, I was against this.
You know, one of the, one of the topics that I heard Mr. Womelley speak on was the difference between activity and achievement. And I think that, I think that that in and of itself is worthy of our teachers to hear, because too many times, we mistake activity for achievement.
Correct.
I'll add, I'll add real quick.
Or complaints for achievement.
Jay was being asked a question about the contract early on in this conversation, and I'll look back to Jeff and say, I'm certain that you and your team have gone over the contract, and you're presenting this to us as a recommendation coming from you, correct?
That's correct.
And you're good. Okay. Thank you.
We, but it's still, it's our job, like, I've looked at the contracts, and I don't need to argue what sort of may be. Not to be disrespectful, but, you know, we have caught where we were spending, I forget, was some outrageous amount of money to a DJ, and we were like, what? This, you know, because you opened up the contract, and I just don't think, I just don't think that's what we're doing, and I think we should.
I was wondering what you meant, the contract, because the amount of money was listed right, right there. I was thinking there was something that I missed.
So, so what is missed is sometimes these links aren't opening from here, and nobody knows. And that's the issue. I spoke with Elena about it.
And I agree, I agree with that issue. I've had that problem myself.
And that's the issue. So no, so nobody's clicking on these to say, oh, does this make sense? Okay. Because we do, we do, we've already said publicly, we support Dr. Graham and we support Ms. Kia. But it's our jobs to, to see what they're doing. It's our jobs to look on every finance report. It's our job to open up the contract and to read them and to make sure that this makes sense, and we're not doing that.
Has it been moved and seconded?
It has been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario?
No.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
No.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
And that's all I have to say. And we'll provide the board with our plan on trauma-informed care. So obviously, we've been cleared, and I own that.
Any new business from the board? Committee reports requests from board members. Second hearing of the public. The next board meeting will be Monday, October 13th at 5:00 PM, right here. And at this point, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for A to employment and B, purchase of property. We will not be making any decisions when we come out.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.